It is seven o'clock, I believe, maybe 7:01. And so I would like to call the Village of Webster Board meeting for October 8th quarter. And please hand the board's allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. You would note that this scheduled meeting is open to the public, but due to state guidelines, masks are required at all times while in the building. If you have any questions, you can contact the clerk's office. We are also on Zoom again. So if you would like to speak but do not feel comfortable recording or attending the meeting, please feel free to use the via the calling. I believe that you can email the village clerk, heatherhallstead@villageofwexster.com. Send a comment or question via Facebook, live during the meeting, and through chat or direct message, or call us during the public comment section, 265-3772. We will open that up for call after anyone that is currently here at the meeting and wishes to speak does so, and then it will be open for calls. Okay? So at this particular time, I would open the public comment portion of the meeting. And if anybody would like to address the board, they may do so by coming to the microphone. Okay. I don't believe that there's anyone who is coming to the microphone. So is there anyone who wishes to call in at this particular time? There you go. I don't believe anyone is calling in at the moment. We'll wait another minute or another minute.
I don't read sign, I saw my number. I'm not sure what you're trying to say.
The number?
He's asking if you read the number.
He read it.
I did read the number. Yes, I'll read it again. 265-3772. Well, doesn't seem to be a call coming in, so we will move on to public comment portion or to the scheduled agenda, and we will open it up a little bit later on if anybody wants to call in the middle of the night. All right, our first item of business tonight was Matt Chatfield. He was to speak to us regarding the Village UP WP application and resolution. I will, I guess, speak to that. I'm not quite sure if we will be more related to like this to do tonight in terms of this. But there is a proposal to study the North End Business District, and it is technically referred to as the revitalization of an area in the Village of Webster, informally virtualized as North End. But this encompasses quite a bit of area. It encompasses North Pines as well as into the area of Webster, the Business District of Webster. I don't know if you can see this with the map, but it also includes into just the very western edge of the Xerox campus. It is a proposal to take a look at the effective and efficient use of existing and future public resources, promoting both the economic development and preservation of our community resources, looking at a project to study the development of and the enhancements of infrastructure and to infrastructure, or other facilities in a manner that will attract, create, and sustain employment opportunities where applicable. The village will accept an offer by the Town of Webster to enjoin said application as a project partner, with a commitment from the town to share in the required matching funds, which would be 10% of the total that is being asked for, which would be a total of $100,000, but 50 or 100, excuse me, $10,000 would be the required matching fund, and the village and town would share equally 50% of that for $5,000. So the village is looking to approve this application sponsored project, which will strengthen and differentiate the identity of the North End Business District through improvements to the transportation system, land use policy guidance that encourages sustainable future development, and would authorize therefore the mayor to commit the village in writing to the required local matching funds. So I don't know if you have the opportunity to put this over. I think we have looked at this before, but.
He sent it by email.
Sent it by email?
Yeah, he did.
So do I hear any comments from you regarding this application? This resolution? Personally, I think it's a great opportunity. It's been out before us to look at this North End, to see what can be done with it, enhance it, as well as partnership with the town, because some of it doesn't encroach or includes town land. Very significant that they have been willing to partner with the village. So if there is no objection, I would ask then for a motion to allow the mayor to sign this resolution.
And Don, obviously, you were going on this trip.
I think there are a couple of changes, but.
Yeah, there's a couple of typos in it, and Heather's got to get the bottom part to reflect the vote on the motion.
I'm just.
You know, Matt needs a resolution because he needs something in writing from the village to submit along with the application committing to the matching grant, matching fund.
Right. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Albonito?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Belkane?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve minutes. We have two sets of minutes tonight to approve. The first is the September 10th meeting, and the second is the September 24th meeting minutes. So if you would take a moment to let those over. And if there are no comments to be made, then I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Oh, no, no motion. I'll second it.
Trusty Belkane?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Albonito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Your second.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have claims and warrants. Believe that they are or have been with that. I have looked through them. I don't know of any particular questions that have not already been answered.
I reviewed some, I didn't have any questions, sir.
I do not either.
Okay. Then I would accept the motion to approve the financial statements, including the claims and warrants.
Two dog poop signs. I like that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Albonito?
Aye.
Trusty Belkane?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have the resolution to set a public hearing and propose Local Law Number Three of 2020 to abolish the current planning board and zoning board and create a new zoning board of appeals with all the powers of a planning board and zoning board of appeals on November 12th, 2020, at 7:15 PM here in the meeting room. This is a result, I believe, of a number of things. There are a number of villages that in the county have made this move to consolidate their boards. And one, we have had a number of people who recently have, for house reasons as well as for other reasons of their own, have wished to leave the boards. And so at this particular time, it seems that this might be an appropriate time to look to consolidate the boards together. So I'm looking to set up a public hearing, and I would offer for a resolution to set up the public hearing on the proposed Local Law Number Three of 2020 to abolish the current planning board and zoning board and create the new zoning board on, this would be on November 12th at 7:45.
Sorry, excuse me, Mayor Byers?
Yes.
I apologize, it's 7:15.
7:15, thank you. That will be here in the meeting room. So I have a.
So just, so at the end of that resolution?
Yes, sir.
You gotta, there has to be 10 days notice, so it's gonna be published on a report November 2nd in the Herald, so if you're trying to get that date.
Other, that we could publish it actually for two weeks prior.
Oh yeah, you can do it sooner, that's just the very way.
If I put it in next meeting, or next, the next one?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, can I have a motion to approve this resolution to establish the public hearing on November 12th at 7:15?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trusty Belkane?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Albonito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, you all have a copy of the financial statements, which I believe is a year-to-date, so you'll be able to take a look at those and comment on them. We don't have time to go through them now, but they are, oh, here we are in October, but we've pretty much finished the first quarter of the year, so an opportunity to take a look and see how we're doing for the first quarter of the year. Make note of that. Please don't leave them, take them with you and work on that. Appreciate you doing that. I believe we're all sent in, so we have them electronically as well, so.
They're all on the, in the Webster Herald.
Yep. We're doing fairly well. Okay, at this time, Don, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, the only thing is, I did speak with Shane, Shane something or other, Shane Canyon from Integrated Systems, the IP person, to see if they would consider changing the liquidated damages clause and the statute, the shortened statute of limitations in their agreement. And he said, well, I'll go check with the owner. He called me back and said, nope, technically. So I had a trouble talking.
I did talk to them, and they did say that, because that, as Don does bring up a good point, they do, I got information from him today, and he said they do as a standard, and they do have 39 municipalities that have signed this agreement. So that is definitely in their wheelhouse, and because we do have extra insurance, just so you know.
But as I pointed out, again, they're the ones that should have the insurance. If they screw up, they should have insurance to cover.
Right, they should have.
Instead, if they screw up, it's a claim that the village has to make on its insurance. And I said, if you guys do such a great job, why are you so worried about limiting your damages and shortening the statute of limitations?
So is.
And he had no, he had no answer for that, other than, as Heather said, oh, we deal with a lot of municipalities and nobody ever questioned it. Well, I'm like, all right, so you got all these other municipalities that enter into bad contracts, that doesn't excuse, you know? I just don't understand it. I told him, boy.
I'm just curious what the other companies are doing. If it's a standard thing, then you can't get away from it, but if it's something specific to them, they should question.
I don't know, Jerry, you probably look at service agreements out of town, and most of them don't have these liquidated damages clause, you know, it's like, it's just negligence. And then he's like, well, if it's, you know, we don't have any control over the users. If it was someone in the village that caused, you know, a breach of, you know, the stuff. I said, well, then you're now at fault, so you don't have to worry about it, right? I said, what if it's something you guys do that causes, you know, a hacker to get into the, breach the firewall and get in and get all the personal information of every village employee, and it's nobody else's fault? You're limited to 7,500 bucks, and you gotta sue them within a year. You know, and he's like, well, that's the way it is. I'm like, okay. I said, it's up to the board, they could either, you know, I said, you're not the only IT company in town either, but.
No.
It didn't sway him up, so, no.
How much was the savings?
It was around 5,000 or more.
Over the course of a year?
Yeah, and Alantina does a wonderful job, sorry, Alantina's a wonderful job, it's just that they're not, they're not municipalities, that's not their wheelhouse, so they can, they have a lot of bigger companies, so, that maybe aren't as concerned about cost as we are. So we're the only municipality. So they do a wonderful job, and, but it's just, I know there are companies out there that understand our fiscal responsibility and, so, but I mean, I know we did go out to several companies, but it's, we have, after COVID and everything, we kind of put this off for a while because, but I'd be happy to go back and look for some other companies. We had gotten loan reviews, but I didn't necessarily ask about the contract, so I could, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to fuck around a little bit more.
Okay, no problem.
Hey, lady.
Apparently, you adapted the resolution, man, you can go home.
It was the number one agenda, I hope.
I thought, I was trying to get you out soon.
You can chat about it. You're welcome.
She was trying to get you out, but you weren't here yet.
You're welcome to say more than I did.
Oh, it's perfect, I'm glad you guys had the discussion, so. You're all, we're all set?
I'm good.
Yeah, Daryl, Daryl kind of went through a little bit.
We did pseudo math.
Okay, great. All right, hey, nice meeting, man.
Heather's got the word version of your resolution, there's just a couple of things she's got to get.
No, I was just a drag.
And I texted you about that.
Okay. All right, Matt, Matt, but you're open to stack.
No, I'm, I'm gonna go eat there.
Good to see you.
And just as an update, it says, I think you might be having some Facebook difficulties, but keep moving forward. It says that it's not playing the video, but it says it's still live, so I'm not sure. Can't really change it right now.
Heather, you need to start getting this to work properly.
Hey, it's worked probably the last few meetings.
Well, I apologize if you're not receiving video, but you are getting audio, so we'll try to speak into the microphones.
Okay.
All right, I would suggest when we hold on, you know, following through with Integrated Systems until we can maybe check a couple of more of the companies and make a decision whether or not we feel this is comfortable for us or not.
No problem. I mean, we weren't that, we weren't super rough to change anyway, because a lot, it does, a lot goes into it, and we have a lot of other things going on, so we're okay, but definitely I will 100% reach out and see what I can find out.
Anything else to add? No?
I'm not on there, but I do have one thing, and I did reach out, we got it last night.
I think I told you about that. Daryl?
Yeah? Do you have one other thing?
So I got a call from legislator Turp last night, and he has really loved our costume contest last year, and he was really hoping that we could maybe do something, a virtual one, where people could, individuals or groups could submit photos to the village office. And I actually thought it would be a good idea, he said that he would be happy to sponsor the event, and we could do cash prizes, and then, instead, not, let me rephrase, not cash, but the winner could pick which village business he wanted to buy a gift card for.
I think it was up to $300, he said, he said that.
Yep.
Don wasn't willing to match.
Yes, yes. And then I did reach out to Peter Elder today, and he was really excited about it too, and he said that he would be willing to reach out to the bid, and I know we're nervous, we don't have too many Facebook followers, we're trying to get more, but he said that he would be happy to reach out to the bid to see if they wanted to get a couple prizes, and, I mean, I don't think it would, I know we're getting close to the wire, but I reached out to Adam last night and asked if he could do a little flyer for us, if it was something you were interested in, and so if we get it on the bid website, we get it on our website, and, oh, Missy Rosenberg would be happy to put it in her blog. It really wouldn't be too difficult for the village office, even though all we have to do is pick a winner and announce it on Facebook, and then reach out to them, asking what their prize, and legislator Turp did say he would love to make a video with you, Daryl, to post, just a couple quick, two-minute, saying, you know, we're interested in seeing your costumes, and Peter would like to see your turkey costume, that was his request.
I don't know, I don't know how you should take that.
So I wanted to get your thoughts on it.
Can you still get candy so Jake can watch it personally with the can? That's what my interest is on sponsored, I'm like, yes, you can.
I only need about, well, 300 of that's going to the prizes, so you're gonna set, put in some money for it, and you can buy candy.
So I mean, if you guys think you can get a whole lot off, then you'll get enough. I don't really have an issue.
Well, he said even if he had three, we could do our best to, I really didn't think of Missy, so.
So when would you set up, when would you set up a date that be either, is it either a video or would it be pictures?
Video would be great, it's picture or video, and then I was gonna create a Gmail account just specifically for entries, and then we would just, all we'd have to do is post them to Facebook, so people could see them, we'll come up with some categories, and depending on what Peter's able to come up with with the bid, because we were just gonna do three or four prizes, which was 175, 50, and then most graded for 25, so we'll see what he comes up with. I'm thinking we probably need, just depending on how many entries we get, I bet we probably just need a few days, so maybe end it like the week of Halloween, because it's on a Saturday, and maybe announce it on Friday or on Saturday on Facebook.
I have an idea, too.
And then we're still encouraging village business, and.
Thank you all.
I like it.
I like it, I mean.
Okay.
Kind of like a paywall.
Yeah, I really don't see, not that I'm saying, you know, I just, I was worried at the time, because I said, you know, everything else is canceled in the village, because there's no trick or treat trail, but really, it wouldn't really be a lot of effort on our part, and why not encourage village business, and we can still get people excited about Halloween.
Heather, we said yes.
I know that a lot of the things I've canceled, trick or treat trail and so on, but I imagine Jake will probably still have some candy in the office.
Not for long.
For long. I think that would be great, and I would, I'll be in tomorrow and talk it over.
Great, so I'll reach out to legislator Turp, and you guys can make a little video and we'll post it. Okay. We do, one last thing is, we do have money in the celebration line, so I would like to just utilize Adam to make a little, just a little thing for the paper, and so I just wanted to make sure that was okay. Okay.
You guys haven't seen it in a while.
Yes.
That's good.
Thank you.
Oh, quick question, what do we decide, or where are we at on Veterans Day dinner?
So the girls and I are meeting tomorrow, and we actually were gonna ask Jake to come too, because we wanted to know what would be entailed with using the parking lot, so it was gonna be takeout, and Greg Cody was going to be meeting, if not, if it wasn't this week, I think it already happened, he was gonna be meeting with the Legion and BFW to tell them their interest. One thing I did say, I would really like Daryl, Mayor Byers, to be able to go down to their ceremony, so that he could say thank you there, and then encourage people to come and get a takeout. So we're coming up with a plan, and I will send you an email soon.
Jake, you have like pop-up time or something, just in case it's a good, rainy day.
Yeah. Yeah, we always have that kind of on standby, and I just got a new one at home, and I opened up, yes, me and I some shiny new.
Try it out.
Yeah.
We'll have to be down here, so if we bring food down, it could.
Yeah.
Be put onto tables and then handed out to cars as they come by.
And we've got a, we've got a couple of them, so we could even, we could even try to work out of the, we took, made arrangements with the firehouse, if we want to work out of there, we can, so that, just depending on the day, I think the weather's gonna dictate what we do about it.
Either it would be fine, I just, I think it would be best to have it, if we have it inside here, there or inside here, just so that we can keep it warm, so that we can have it on the, what do they call it?
Punks and, I have science.
Ottawa.
We're gonna, no, we will be in here, do get it ready, and then we'll bring it out to them.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, but we can keep it, the food in here and keep it warm.
Well, we need to keep it moving, because you don't know how many people are coming through, and we wouldn't want them to wait.
Well, hopefully, we're gonna have reservations, hopefully people will be letting us know what they have, and then we have extras. So we'll come up with a plan, and I will definitely let you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question, Al.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. On the public works.
Good evening, I want to thank the clerk for the nice new stationery. It's really. It's really adorable. The, just a few announcements, leaves are gonna start October nineteenth. Don't be surprised if you see us out there next week, kind of doing a little test run, you know, cat webs out, but really, it would be just an abbreviated thing if we do it next week at all, maybe just grabbing some files and that's weather dependent and everything, so. We're gonna plan on starting our runs, and our goal again is to do one run every week. Always have to remind people, leaves, the leaves, I even see them out there already, leaves, leaves out of the gutters and out of the roadway, you know, put them along the edge of the road and we can reach them. But, yeah, that's what I started, and hopefully this year we'll not be digging them out of snow.
I think it's not allowed yet.
Yeah, and we didn't have on our, we discussed before, we had an opening in our Department of Public Works. And we have not brought anybody up yet. It was, went on Facebook and we had considerable interest, but Facebook apparently has a button on it that says, apply now, and there was the thought that if you click on a button and submit your Facebook profile, that's an application. I sent a application, or I emailed everybody, because Facebook also generates an email address if you log onto something, but apparently no one gets those emails. I tried to even try and send myself one, you know, applying and send it one through that, and I haven't received an email, so. Long ago, I called everybody and said, hey, submit an application, so I'm waiting for those applications to come in, to give everybody a fair shot, so hopefully at the next meeting we'll have somebody to bring up for that opening. Now, we're gonna try to start doing some interviews maybe next week, once we can get everybody's resume, or application like that. Sambar Wells, we, at the last, I think it was the last meeting or maybe two ago, we did the agreement with Lobella for the environmental stuff, and those are getting underway. We talked a little bit with Ethan from Lobella yesterday. And one of their company, part of their company that's gonna do that, I was, I'm a lay, a ranger for access, so they're gonna be in and out there, so many times, I'm gonna, we'll ultimately just get them those set of keys and meet them down there and get them going and then let them do their thing. Also, on that same, with Lobella, the two A, we met with Clem and Ethan yesterday, quick to discuss the two A and the schedule on that. As it stands now, there's a lot of the, obviously we have a unique situation and some of the questions could be in, you know, have, are open to interpretation, what they're looking for, for a search result, so Ethan is reaching out to our regional representatives and trying to set up a meeting with the regional representatives, maybe even a virtual meeting, but regional and the state permit writer, they're trying to get a state permit writer assigned to it, and then we can say, all right, here, here's, you know, for these questions, what are you looking for, what type of information, just because it could go a few different ways, so we submit it once rather than submit it and then it misinterpreted or comes back, so we can kind of streamline that process. Twenty-eight Sineka Street, just an update there, we did get on the schedule for the court, for small claims court, if you recall, that's the property that we have due extensive property maintenance on. So right now, we're scheduled for the twenty-sixth of October to go to court, but I did get a call from Chase, JP Morgan Chase, hoping to avoid going to court, so I'm waiting for receptive information last week, and hopefully it was enough to overwhelm them and have them just give up the bill. But we're waiting to see, maybe not, because they haven't sent us a check yet, so. I'm getting my gray suit ready, just in case. And then finally, at the next meeting, hopefully we'll have everything done. We're working with Marsh and some other equipment suppliers for a wheel loader, that was one of the things that was in the budget this year. Obviously, we're watching our Ps and Qs with not knowing exactly what's going on with all the sales tax revenue and some of our revenue sources, but we're working with Marsh on it, and we had funds in there for a loader, for kind of an equipment lease purchase deal. And we also had three other vehicles. We're holding off, obviously, on those other vehicles, the loaders will be the most important thing, and I think we've got, seems like the, the equipment salespeople might be not as busy as they expected, because they're, they're getting back really fast and seems like they're, they're really looking for different things that they can do to help us out, so it's certainly to our benefit. But we're waiting for one more manufacturer, which are all already competitively dead through, like, it used to be NJPA, but now it's Sourcewell, or some of them are on OPS, or, you know, might be on a tax account here, you've got, they're on contract, already competitively dead, that we're able to piggyback off of, so hopefully we'll have something for that at the next meeting, and it's gonna be a real important piece of equipment that we have, so. And that's it.
Thank you.
Well, I think we'll maybe try once more, see if anybody wishes to call in.
I'm, I'm waiting if I can, one more thing that we had.
A moment, the call number, it's two six five three seven seven two, and the lines are again open if you wish to call in for public comment.
No, but that we've been discussing, the Webster Economic Access Project, which is a devaluation of, and look at the Xerox roads and the making those public roads and that process won't go about today, we did get nine expressions of interest or letters of interest from LDSA, and if you would have asked me a couple minutes ago, I could tell you exactly what LDSA stands for, but basically it's engineering firms that are kind of vetted already and on a list with the, with the DOT and some of these state agencies for completing that work on those projects. It's a similar process what we did on the North Avenue project. We, we received nine really, I think, great letter or expressions of interest, and it really highlights the fact that we had a lot of good firms available in our area that we're working, that we can work with. We did, Matt got it down to three, and I think Matt's gonna send it out tomorrow, I think he's planning on sending out to those three for kind of a next step, okay, here's your round two, now give us, you know, some additional information on pricing, proposals and things like that, so we should be able to take those three and narrow it down, hopefully the, obviously the one, and then look to move forward with that, so.
We won't give the names. We won't give the names.
No, you're right.
Yes, I saw that, so I hope we're through the weekend, I guess. Okay, I don't believe anybody is calling in, so we will take the phone off, and is there any last amendments anybody would like to make or? Otherwise, we're looking for, our next meeting will be October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, and at that point, we'll have much more information in terms of the trick-or-treat trail and. Other sundry things, I guess, right? Anything else that you'd like to bring up? If not, then I will have an app for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Just a quick correction, there will not be a trick-or-treat trail anymore.
That's not anymore, well, maybe next year.
Next year, no, for sure, I'm guaranteeing next year. It's gonna be back, it's gonna be back this.
See you back in costume.
Yes. Two cool pirates.
I already heard, heard.
All right.
All right, I'll have, intend a motion to close the meeting.
Make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.